Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Today is September the 8th and this is our regular monthly board meeting and we'd like to, first of all, welcome everyone that has come out tonight. We always love to see citizens of the county come out and join us in our meetings, so we welcome each and every one of you. As always, we start our meetings out with a prayer and a pledge and tonight, we're gonna have Commissioner Garner to lead a center pledge and Commissioner Ellis will lead the prayer, so if you would, rise.
Let's pray. Father, just like to take time out today and say thank you. Thank you for all the blessings you give us, the beautiful weather, this beautiful county, the wonderful employees, the opportunity to come and try to make the best decisions that we can for the county. We just ask your guidance on that. I'd like to thank you for the blessings of the people here tonight. Keep us safe as we do business and we travel home. In your name we pray, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now here are motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Conditions or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now here are motion we approve the agenda for tonight.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You opposed, okay. On our appointments tonight, starting out with item A, we've got the Parks and Recreation program an update and we have Mr. Aitken Kazee here tonight, so we welcome you, sir, and your team.
So, good afternoon, thank you guys for having us. I want to get started off with a quick little update. So, before I touch on the two programs I'm wanting to expand, I want to give a quick update, so on August 23rd, we hosted our Free Physical Day, which 113 children received free physicals thanks to Marion Medical Clinic. Through our, the grant with the North Carolina Amateur Sports Youth Foundation, we were able to fund the construction of a pavilion at Hemp Hill Park. And new bleachers are currently being installed at the Parks and Recreation Building this week. These bleachers have ADA seating accommodations, expand the seating capacity and are overall provide a safer option compared to the current metal bleachers at the rec center. Our flag football registrations finished with 409 total registrations. This was a 21% jump from 2024 and is the fourth straight season of consistent growth for our flag tackle and cheerleading programs. And this season, each participant for tackle and cheerleading was custom fit for a tackle jersey or tackle jersey and pants or a cheerleading uniform. That's the first time we've been able to offer that and the kids will actually get to keep the uniforms this year. And all of our NFL flag jerseys, they arrived today and that's just through our partnership with the NFL for their flag league. A little update on the pool, we had over 11,000 patrons served this summer, which shattered previous summer highs. We also have a survey out in the public that's asking about potential programming for the 2026 season, so we have a lot of positive momentum there, we want to try to capitalize on that. And both pools have begun winterization processes. A quick update for Black Bear Campground, August 2025 was our largest month for reservations since opening in 2023. And as of this report, revenue for 2025 has greatly outpaced 2024 with nearly over $10,000. And the McDowell County Shooting Range hosted their annual Train Up a Child, which had 12 participants. And tomorrow, they will host their Never Too Late to Learn program. And I'd also like to add that the NC Wildlife came down and met with my Shooting Range staff and they said that they're wanting to incorporate Train Up a Child at other ranges throughout the state, so it's looking like Train Up a Child will be offered throughout the state and it started here.
Good.
Our first proposal is our youth basketball division. We've just begun registration for that. Currently, our basketball league is the only league that does not include four-year-olds. Our football offering has flag for four-year-olds, our little league has T-ball. So, in years past, our basketball league has only offered five-years-old, is the youngest, and that's been for cheerleading and basketball to stay consistent. Our proposal is to expand our basketball and cheerleading offerings to include four-year-olds. My programs administrator, Brandon Affler, has come up with a proposal for this. The division will be called the First Baskets Basketball Division. It is offered to four-year-olds to introduce them to the game in a fun and encouraging environment. This program will focus on basic skills such as dribbling, shooting, and teamwork. Coaches would use simple instructions, plenty of movement and positive reinforcement to keep the players engaged and excited to learn. Some quick rules for the league would be no score would be kept as this is gonna be an instructional league. We're focusing on getting these kids able to dribble, getting these kids able to shoot a ball, and know the fundamentals of basketball. We don't need scores and we don't need parents fighting over who won the game one to none.
It would happen if you kept score.
Yes, so the game format would be two 15-minute halves with a running clock with a five-minute halftime and games would be played on half-court. On a rebound or turnover, a player would be stopped and the team with the ball would start at the opposite end of the court on the foul line to begin their possession. Each possession must have a different child dribbling the ball up the court. Offense must attempt three passes before they're allowed to shoot. If the ball goes out of bounds, play will be stopped and brought back to half-court to begin play. Defense must stay within the three-point line. There'll be no referees, there'll be a coach from each team out with the children along with Parks and Recreation staff. We plan to have most of the games at the Recreation Center, either on Friday nights or Saturday mornings. And that is basically the gist of our First Baskets proposal. My second proposal will be for our NRA. It'll be down at, our Shooting Range will be NRA firearm classes. So McDowell County Parks and Recreation, through our Shooting Range staff, are looking to begin offering NRA firearm classes at the Shooting Range. This endeavor comes from consistent requests to the range staff, from patrons inquiring about such offerings. This would also provide an additional revenue source at the range. The courses would be administered through the NRA Learning Center by certified instructors already on staff. Having instructors already on staff would save us money in insurances, we wouldn't have to worry about bringing in third parties to teach the class, we already have them on our staff as is. The courses are NRA-backed, immediately providing legitimacy and trust in the quality of the courses. Example of some courses that would be offered are Intro to Pistols, Intro to Rifles, Advanced Pistols, Advanced Rifles, Home Firearms Safety, Concealed Carry at a Later Date, and many more options. The course would be offered on days the ranges scheduled to be closed to the public, so it would not affect any normal operations. Frequency of the courses will be based on demand and the classes will be eight hours from four hours in the classroom and four hours on the range. All of the classes would take place at the McDowell County Shooting Range. The office will be converted into a classroom space and there will be a minimum of six participants per class, maximum of 10 if it's a rifle-oriented class, or 12 if it's a pistol-focused class. That is just based on the amount of ranges that we have on site. Registration costs would be $150 per person for the introduction level classes and $200 per person for the advanced level classes. And we have it structured to make sure that the salaries of staff putting on the class are covered along with insurance profit for the day. The first class we plan to offer would be an introduction into pistols with a tentative offering date of late September to early October based on registration.
Listen, I'm impressed by all of it, what you have done with their Parks and Recreation or Shooting Range. You know, you guys have really done a lot of good, hard work. That's pretty interesting, one of the last statements you made there about the NRA classes, that's a big deal too, and so that will help, you know, teach and qualify a lot of these younger guys to maybe some point in time be range officers even, whatever, but the NRA classes are, that's good classes. So appreciate that and appreciate all you guys are doing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the move that we approve the new programs as presented.
Second.
Got a motion to second discussion. All in favor say aye. You opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I do want to say the pavilion at Hemp Hill Park is fantastic and the location's great, that way they can see both fields as they're sitting under that, so great job on that.
What do you have with you tonight?
So this is Brandon Affler, he's my programs administrator. This is Brent Rowe, he's my chief range safety officer. And this is Mrs. Pam Forsey, she's our office administrator at the Shooting Range.
Greatly appreciate all of you.
Let's give him a hand. We'd also like to say that we appreciate you guys here in McDowell County setting the bar high enough to where that it's gonna make all these other counties struggle to try to catch up with us. We'd love to see that.
That's the plan.
Yeah.
You know, I want to say thank you for everything you do with organized sports, but just me being in the gym the other day with some other day programs and some of our special citizens in the county were in there and you all had it all set up for them to learn how to play pickleball and they were having a blast and I just thought that was super cool.
The challenging mission.
Just outside of, you know, the organized sports, you're also focusing in on some of the young adults and children who can't participate in some of them, so that was really neat to see. So, thank you for that, it was neat.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, next on the agenda is item B, we've got the Library One, Day One exhibit and we have Marlon and Brittany and Candice Whortman here tonight.
So I'm here on behalf of the America 250 Committee. We have organized an event for next Wednesday, September 17th. It's a rare opportunity provided by the NC State Archives to come see the actual NC Constitution, the real primary document, along with a letter from John Adams on how to govern and also the readmittance after the Civil War for North Carolina. These documents will be at the Mountain Gateway Museum Wednesday, September 17th, from 10:00 to 5:00. Thanks, Madeline. And we actually do have Foothills Community Schools 8th grade, since 8th grade is North Carolina history, they will be joining us for about two and a half hours that day to come see the documents and do all kinds of stations, but I just want to invite the public to that.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Put that on our calendar, Madeline.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much. All right, next is item C, which is the Helene Update, and we have Mr. Wim Keller here for that. Wim, Wim.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, thank you for having us back again for the monthly update on Hurricane Helene recovery operations. I want to recognize my deputy director, Adrian Jones, who's here this evening and appreciate her continued leadership and work on Helene recovery as well as her normal daily duties that she takes care of.
Can I interrupt you just one second?
Yes.
Thanks for the nuggets.
You're welcome. Today is day 349 of the Emergency Operations Center's work with regard to Hurricane Helene through preparedness, response, and now recovery. And as everyone knows, we are approaching the one-year anniversary and I'll speak of that here in just a few minutes. When we look at our recovery operation as of today, we still have four active areas, including debris management, private roads and bridges, housing repairs, hazard mitigation, and then the emergency watershed protection program to ensure stabilizations of our creeks and rivers. On the debris front, the Army Corps has ended the waterway debris mission. We are scheduled to meet with North Carolina Emergency Management officials this week concerning the SMART program for another mission, I would call this round two, for waterway debris that we know is still present. And we have submitted over 200 points, coordinates that our office collected and has been managing and coordinating with North Carolina Emergency Management for eligibility and potential removal of that debris. Here's the graphic from the US Army Corps of Engineers as of yesterday. 1,365,282 cubic yards of debris, over a million cubic yards of that debris came out of our waterways with the remainder of that figure coming off of rightaways and now off of personal property. Individuals or residents who signed up for the Personal Property Debris Removal Program, also known as PPDR, there were 1,441 parcels that applied for debris removal. Of those, the Army Corps has awarded 1,294 to contractors. They've completed 1,104 parcels and that work continues on a daily basis. Last week, they were averaging 25 to 30 crews per day in McDowell County.
Wim, let me interrupt you right there just a second. What would be a reason that someone might be denied?
That's a great question. A couple things. Number one, PPDR or Personal Property Debris Removal is designed, one, the eligibility determination comes from FEMA. It is determined whether the debris is on maintained property. So if the property, they look at aerial images pre-Helene to determine whether the property was grass, maintained. Anything that is in the woods is considered not maintained and is not eligible.
Okay.
There's certain criteria for leaners. The tree has to be threatening property or a driveway or some type of infrastructure. And then, as we have moved on to the applications that are demolition, considered demolition applications, the residents had to be occupied when the storm hit. So we've seen some applications denied for a structure that wasn't being lived in. There's various reasons, what our office has done, and we do this multiple times a day, is act as liaison for the resident and work with the Army Corps and FEMA if there is a question about eligibility to see if we can get it resolved favorably for the resident if it's something that we feel should be eligible. So if you get questions about PPDR, I've encouraged you to have the resident call us and see if we can't help troubleshoot. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, and I think this is an important piece, whether it's a person had some yard damage or they're not happy with the work, ultimately, those contractors aren't working for the county, they're working for the US Army Corps, that is who their contract is with. And FEMA is the one that works directly with the Army Corps. We're actually the liaisons trying to troubleshoot any issues that come up. Hope I answered your question.
You did. I just want folks to, that are out there listening, to make sure they understand that we can't just go into, like you said, into the woods and clean up all that debris, but if it's near the home and the maintained part of the curillage, then that's what they're happy with.
That is correct. It is designed to remove threat to infrastructure.
Right.
Or structures. The emergency watershed protection program, so this is kind of phase two on the waterways, this is the restoration, this is where we get into stream rechanning. If the stream is in a different place than it was pre-Helene, the EWP program will look at these types of items and determine whether it is eligible. There's eligibility in all of the programs, so what we encourage citizens to do, if you have erosion on the string bank, you still have debris in the waterway, is go to the county's website, mcdowgov.com, click the Helene Update, and there is a button for Emergency Watershed Protection Program. And they fill out a very simple interest form that goes to the local soil and water office. That alerts them you're interested in the program and then they will be in contact with the homeowner or the landowner to take further steps and do the assessment. So, that program, EWP, is managed through the Soil and Water Office here. It is actually a federal program, but they are the local point of contact. All right, on private roads and bridge programs, this continues to be a major issue. We've got nearly 400 private roads and bridges that have, those interest forms went into the state and there hasn't been much movement. That is a state program that is looking to rebuild bridges and repair driveways. And that is moving much slower than what we want, but it is, it does have some forward progress as far as assessments that have been performed on Priority One, meaning these are the locations that still emergency services cannot access. So we are utilizing alternative means, whether it's a UTV, a small four-wheeler, or whatever it may be, a brush truck going through the creek. We've got contingency plans in place for these areas should an emergency event occur and the bridge is still not replaced. This will be an ongoing project for an extensive amount of time. What the state has done is, if you remember when I was here last month, the application period for a resident who has a bridge or driveway needs to be repaired, those applications were due August 31st. So North Carolina Emergency Management has opened up a second program now for residents who repaired their driveway or bridge right after Helene or since Helene, utilize their own money. They can now apply for up to 50% reimbursement for those repairs. And that is currently open, there's the website at the bottom, the ncddps.gov website slash helene slash PRB. Emergency housing repair and rebuilds, as you're well aware, this is being led by Jerry Lewis as the EOC's VOAD coordinator and Victoria Gerink, who continue to do a magnificent job assisting the residents here in the county. They continue to meet bi-weekly at the EOC with 27 different groups attending. 478 homes have been repaired, 29 repairs are pending, and currently there are 26 rebuilds being planned or in progress, and that is with the support of Samaritan's Purse, Baptist On Mission, and numerous other groups. As I've said many times, these are numbers, but behind those numbers is a family. And that is someone's home that they seek refuge in each evening, each day, and many of these homes are the only thing these folks have after Helene. And it is important for us to continue coordinating with the VOAD at our Emergency Operations Center because getting people back into their homes is our top priority here in recovery. I can't be more proud of what this group and all of the nonprofits have done. When you look at where we are at in recovery, we have made substantial progress in nearly 12 months. We've got a lot of work left to do and it's gonna take more time, but I think this community can be proud of the numbers, but more importantly, the families that are back in their homes tonight. And we know we still have others that, we still have 14 families living in FEMA direct housing and those people need back in their homes. So we will not stop until we get every resident back in their home. And that's our commitment and it has been the entire time. Deputy Director Jones is leading the Hazard Mitigation Program and I think she would concur, this program is also moving, it is a state and federal program, it is moving extremely slow. We have 35 acquisition applications, 21 elevations. We are working as hard as possible in the generator projects as we're up against a deadline. And then we have 12 landslide applications. Hazard mitigation, and I've told you this before, they are still trying to complete and finalize hazard mitigation applications at the state that were filed during Tropical Storm Fred back in 2021, and that is four years later. And this is unfortunately a program that we just are not seeing a lot of forward movement at the state and federal level.
Wim, does the Forest Service have a plan to handle, you know, Wim brought it up about private residences, the woods that people own, that the PPDR program can't go out there and bring all that out and clean it up. Is there some plan in place to where, to help prevent the spread of forest fires if one starts with all the downed trees, I guess, I know it'd be on Forest Service land, but...
I know the US Forest Service has worked on wildfire mitigation and trying to get, with some of the relaxation of the environmental laws, is trying to get that timber that's in the national forest out. I can't speak specifically of what that looks like. I am aware that that has been one of the priorities, but at the state level for private residents, I'm not aware of any program that looks to remove debris from the forest on private property. On our FEMA reimbursement update, as a reminder, that's being led by Ms. McLaughlin in our office, total of 15 applications. Since we were here last giving you update, we're up to seven have been obligated totaling over $2.1 million, and she continues to work very hard on a daily basis on the other applications. Our priorities in the next 30 days remain consistent with what they have been since the start of recovery, continuing to address critical needs of the citizens, continue to coordinate these debris operations throughout the county. Our VOAD will continue coordinating housing repairs. Hazard mitigation will continue work on our FEMA reimbursement applications and then continue to implement long-term recovery strategies. And as we said, the first briefing we give you, this will be a multi-year recovery process, but I'm happy to report tonight, I think we are well ahead of where I thought we would be when we started this journey nearly 12 months ago. I recall the first couple of days being in the EOC and finally getting out and making the turn on Catawba Avenue in Old Ford. And that's an image that I think is burnt into our mind of how devastating that flood was, not just for Old Ford, but all of this county. And to think, if you look at that picture and where we are at now, this community together, working together, cooperating, and putting the interest of our residents first, regardless of who they are, we've accomplished the mission to get recovery to where it's at. But we will continue moving this forward over the next year because it is a multi-year recovery process. But I'm really happy of how this community has come together and the support that we have received and your support to our organization throughout our recovery process. I'll end by talking about the resilience and reflection ceremony, Saturday, September 27th, 9:30 a.m., Old Ford Elementary School. If the weather cooperates, we will be in front of the school at the flagpole that morning, that is where the ceremony will take place. Our Plan B is to move it inside if we have inclement weather, but we hope everyone watching at home or in the audience, and then all the commissioners and staff will attend that as we look back on one year, which I'm sure is gonna be an emotional time, as we honor and remember those that we lost, but also reflect on the progress that we've made. Thank you for continued support and I'm happy to take any questions.
I do have a question on, I know Back Cave Road, someone's going and cleaning out ditches and small streams to get into the waterway. Is that DOT or, I mean, it's done just out of Old Ford city limits and it's done, it's been a pretty good ways out, Back Cave Road, and I was assuming it was DOT.
Without looking at it, it's hard to pinpoint exactly who it was.
They did a good job.
If that work occurred four or five months ago, I would say it was probably our waterway folks.
No, it's been done on my property, it was done within the last two weeks.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I've seen DOT out there working on this.
Yeah, they've done a good job, so that's good. I do have a question about bridges here in the county and specifically such as the Curtis Creek Bridge, and you may not have that information yet, they did tell us about 10 months ago that it was gonna take two years to get to that, but do you have any specific data on bridge replacement?
I'm hoping, I asked that question at our LEPC meeting last week, but to be completely transparent with you, I don't remember his answer, so hopefully Mr. Wooten or Ms. Jones.
I heard 26, sometime in 26 is the last.
I think that matches what we heard.
He gave the answer in our meeting, I just don't recall it, but we'll get that and get it back to you.
Yeah. Thank you for what y'all are doing.
All right, thank you very much.
Wanted to, I made that little comment, thinking, Adrian, I have to share this with everybody. When I was taken to the hospital, I just recently had to have a pacemaker put in, which I'm doing great, but I was taken to the hospital and they came out there as part of the group that took me to the hospital, I guess, but anyway, they asked me if there was anything I needed and I'd already been in the hospital for several hours, hadn't had anything to eat or anything, I said, "I'm starving to death, I can't get anything to eat." And so, they left, 15 minutes later, here comes somebody with a little bag of chicken nuggets and give to me, it's the compliments of Adrian, and that was really sweet. And that, you know, that's just the kind of people we have serving this county, you know, I just want to emphasize that we- I just want to emphasize that we have the most caring people serving our county that has ever been. And thank you so much for being the kind of people that you are. Okay, now we'll move on to old business. Out of May under old business, we'll start off with the...
Now, we got two.
We got two.
Ron Harmon.
Got RV campground.
Speaking of nuggets, Ron, I don't know how I skipped you.
You got finger on that.
That's all right.
You had nuggets, yeah.
Mr. Ron Harmon, you're up with the RV campground ordinance, the first reading on that. Sorry about that.
That's quite okay.
You was hoping I'd jump you, wasn't you?
I was hoping so. It's been probably 16 or 18 months ago, the board gave us permission, the planning board, to look into RV park campground ordinance. We've got a mobile home park ordinance that's been in effect since 1997, but we're now getting a lot of calls about tiny homes, which are park models and campgrounds and RV parks. So, we decided that it would be best to get ahead of it before it got out of control. So, what you have before you is the draft document, and the major emphasis is for emergency access. We want to make sure that roads are wide enough, that there is, that grades are not astronomical, that you can get a camper or an RV through. We make sure that structure spacing, we want to make sure there's enough space in between structures so that if a fire were to break out, or we had to have an emergency evacuation, that people could work without getting in each other's way. We also wanted to add the aspect in that all RV parks and campgrounds have to submit a plan of evacuation to emergency services so they know who, what's there, how many lots they're looking at. We want to make sure that lots are numbered so that if you call for a problem, that, that people can respond. And we wanted to make sure that trash collection was a big part of this. So, if you operate a mobile home park, an RV park, or a campground, as the owner, you will be responsible for the trash removal. It's, it's a lengthy document, but it takes each different type of development and does it individually. So, the next step will be, if there are no questions from the board, I would ask that you set a public hearing at your pleasure, whenever you would like to take it before the public.
Well, let me share one quick question. So, going through the document, the distance from, as far as the campground, so is that standard, the feet y'all put in there? I mean, ordinance is good, but is that just standard? I wonder where you...
You talking about like a tent camping?
No, like an RV.
RV, 30 feet.
The size and the distance, distance between sites.
Right. That's, that's, that's what we have in our mobile home park ordinance, and that gives you enough room, like I said, to be able to get in and set up and not get in each other's way if you have to get out in the event of emergency.
I got a question on the enforcement and penalties section under C. There was a, the fine would be up to $50, and of this, if we're, this is after it's already been set up, or is this, because I mean, the person, if they're putting in a permit, they should have a plat of everything that's going, they're going to be putting out there. So, it could be, what I'm assuming is for the people that have put in tiny homes and making sure that everything's good, but the road width for emergency vehicles and the plan and all that stuff. So, is it, is that fee for not supplying the, the plan of evacuation plan, or what exactly is that?
I think that fee would be if we catch you putting something in there that you, adding above and beyond what you've been approved for.
It did not have, okay.
Right.
And two, there's a minimum number, right? I saw 10.
That's for, okay, staff can approve developments up to 10, then anything above 10 has to go before the planning board for approval.
I don't think that the penalties for some of these infractions is, is high enough.
I'm thinking the same.
And, but that is controlled by the general statute.
I will look again, but I'm pretty sure that's statutorily set at $50.
Let's check on that and, you know, now I know in some cases, the state will allow us to make our penalty stronger than what they have. We can't lessen the penalty to what they have, but we can, in some cases, make our, our stronger. So, I'd like to find out about that, if that's possible.
And also, I saw in there, up to 30 days in jail.
That is correct. I would propose for the hearing to be in November, at our November meeting, November 10th, because our October meeting is at Carson House, and we don't have appropriate space. If that's good with everybody, I'd like to make that a motion.
He probably needs that most time anyway. Okay. Good motion, second, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
I'd like to also thank the madam to the clerk to the board, when she was in her other position as planning assistant, she did help on the ordinance, and she did a fantastic job.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Still doing a good job.
I may have missed it, but how many units does it take to designate that as an RV park?
Three.
Three. Okay. Now, follow up to that, parks that are already in existence, not grandfathered in so far as requirements of the ordinance, or everybody has to make the same thing, correct?
An existing park is grandfathered until they start infilling, and then anything they add above and beyond what is already on the books would have to meet the ordinance.
I understand, okay.
And then, there should be something in writing there that where if they lose one or one is taken out, they cannot replace it. Is there anything on that, any language on that?
Typically.
There should be.
I, I think what ours says is if you replace like for like, that's okay, but you can't do any, if you replace a tiny, or I'm sorry, a park model with a mobile home, then that is, you have to get approval for that. But if you replace a mobile home for a mobile home, that's already been approved. That's the way ordinance has been set up since 97.
Looks good.
Okay. I just, I hate to see our county just overwhelmed with this kind of stuff. Maybe it's just me being, maybe it's the devil in me, but I just don't like to see it.
My main concern is, I understand that a lot of folks have been displaced by the hurricane and the damage it was caused, and they have to have someplace to go. And we need to do our best to try to help provide that. At the same time, we need to make sure that downstream where other folks live is taken care of, so that all of this waste and everything is properly disposed of.
And that's really what brought this about, was the fact that people were just going in on an acre of land and putting in six or eight, and they weren't hooked to septic, they didn't have electrical service. So, we wanted to make sure that we could legally have some way to patrol that and have a count of what is there, so we know if it's...
Ron, quick question for you. So, tagging on what I was saying, because I do know of a couple of instances right now where there's about six or seven basically storage buildings, storage units that are set up, that are set up, and there's no water or sewer. And now, would that be grandfathered in? Because does it have to, does it have to meet the current code even as grandfathered? Well, I just want to make sure those people don't just get off scot-free and, and don't have to go in there and put water and sewer in there and they just set it up outside the hill.
I think you're going to have to comply with the state regulations. I don't care whether it's new or old or whatever, they're going to have to comply with the state regulations.
Then you have to have septic and you have to have electricity. And we get complaints all the time that drop towards a run, or people have, people don't have a septic system. That's an environmental health issue. They patrol that, that's, that's what they go out and look into. What I understand, and I could stand to be corrected, is if you have a camper that is self-contained, you do not have to have a septic system on site.
There should be inspections done on those.
Right.
The health department should do inspections on those, make sure that they're not just once a month opening the gate and running that stuff out on the ground, you know?
Thanks for your work.
Thank you, thank you. I could spend a whole hour or two on that one. All right, now we'll move on to old business. Item A would be the Jacktown area property. Just saying. You have the floor, Mr. Wooton.
I'll definitely lean on Mr. Harmon for assistance with this, this matter. But one of the ordinances that his office is charged with enforcing is the abandoned mobile home ordinance. And that's something we've had in place, gosh, 2007 or somewhere in there. And it has typically been a complaint-driven ordinance. We've talked about modifying staff in his department to maybe have a little bit more proactive approach in areas like this for solid waste accumulation, that kind of thing. So, but so far, it's been, we get a complaint that comes here, or the clerk's office, or switchboard, or planning, and, you know, there's a dilapidated mobile home in my neighborhood, I need you to do something about it. And so, sometimes things just look bad, but maybe it's a solid waste issue, and say that's, again, where we've leaned, the sheriff's office for help in the past. But sometimes it's just a home that's been, you know, previously occupied, but now it's just windows that are broken out and there's no power, and it's just beyond an eyesore. It, it, it's a health and safety issue. And so, when a property falls in that condition, it can, you know, attract folks that maybe have ill intent with their occupancy, but also can attract solid waste, they can attract vermin and so forth. And so, anyway, this ordinance is set up to address issues where maybe property owners are absent and just don't care and, you know, let an issue fester. And so, we, we had a situation several years ago where the ordinance was really utilized to maximum effect in an area right outside the city limits on the east side of Marion. And so, what happened there was a property kind of fell into our times, it was dilapidated, no water, no power, and the, the park essentially started to disintegrate. There were a lot of fires, there was drug activity, et cetera. So, Mr. Harmon was in, got involved in that. That owner was notified that there were issues, they had time to clean it up, they did not. And so, the county cleaned up that property and then placed a lien on the property that property owner did not pay the lien, so the property was foreclosed on. So, that's our major experience and history with that ordinance. And when there's been issues here and there, but that was definitely the biggest. Fast forward to more or less present day, similar situation, complaints have come into our office, probably all of you, the sheriff's office and others, about an area on Jacktown Road in that community. And so, similar situation where it started off maybe accumulation of solid waste, the sheriff sent his folks out there, started writing tickets, started saying you need to clean this up. Things got worse. The homes that were there were not in great shape to start off with, but got worse, no power, no water, sewage. And so, they fall under the abandoned category. And so, the first step, the property owners mail a certified letter. If we don't get the card back, we go to the next step, which tends to be serviced by law enforcement. And so, the property owners here have been served, they have until September 30th to bring the property up to standard, which essentially means, you know, please correct me, that any violations of the ordinance must be addressed by that date. If they're not, we have the ability to come back to you to authorize action. And action can mean like before, that we, you know, get bids and quotes for folks with heavy machinery and go in and, and clear the property, haul it off, all the fees with the contract through the tipping fees, everything else is totaled up, and it's placed on the property as a lien, and then you can treat it as, just like any other tax lien, and proceed with a foreclosure. If the property owner could pay it at that point, it's really up to them, but the property would be cleaned.
What kind of response, if any, have we heard from the folks since the letter?
None.
None.
Well, I drove by there just yesterday, and there's not been any movement to remove any structures off the property. Lots of big piles of trash sitting everywhere.
In the meantime, we will be doing some preliminary outreach to grading contractors and so forth, just so we're prepared for that possibility.
Do you need any kind of action from us to know on that?
I don't think so. Look at the county attorney, I don't think we need action at this point, but I mean, it wouldn't hurt to have it as far as authorizing next step, as far as, you know, proceeding with steps that are out.
I think we need to move on this.
Authorize the cleanup.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we authorize staff. If there's no response by the deadline given, that staff proceeds with whatever steps necessary to abate the problem.
Absolutely. There's no point coming back to the board for that, just move on. Okay, we've got a motion, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye. You oppose? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wooton.
Thank you.
Move on now to the water system project, Mr. Wooton.
Thank you. Just really quick on some updates. We did start our east end project around NC 126 and the Marion Lake Club. That one took a long time to get started after the contract was awarded, and our staff have been, Mr. Riddle, have been meeting with residents and contractor, especially in the more complex areas. But there's pipe born in the ground already, which is good. Nivo Phase 2A and TB are, are starting to wrap up, and so that's good to see. It's a very large project. And we're having some issues with the remaining work in that area, what we're calling Phase 3. The plans have been approved by NCDQ, but the acronym we're having trouble with is NCDOT. We have noticed lately that whenever we propose to build water lines, we have to get an encroachment agreement. And typically that's, you know, maybe a month, two month process. It is stretched into five, six, seven, eight, nine months now. A lot of that has been in their defense to local folks. I spoke with a district engineer lately, very recently, and they are just swamped with a lien. And so, what they have done is anything like encroachment agreements that they don't have to work on a lien, they have formed out to Central Office in Raleigh. Well, it's Raleigh, and they may be a little bit more strict with interpretation on things. And so, they will, I'll use the word nitpick if I can, that hydrant is maybe about four inches too close to the right of way. You need to move it. And, you know, ones that have installed.
The existing?
Existing ones. So, we have not moved any hydrants. And so, okay, we'll take that into consideration, but we're not doing that respectfully. But when it comes to new construction, they have the same, you know, strict approach. And so, our engineer has made several attempts to get the work compliant. And so, I've had a conversation with the district engineer, so you have to help us out because we're kind of burning up time here. So, he, he did ask that they would be glad to help in the interim to try to look at plans and give feedback before they go to Raleigh, but it has slowed things down tremendously. So, just to kind of keep that in mind, in case you accuse me of being a broken record, we are trying to move some things. A little bit the same on the last one there in our Nivo, very small project, but taking time to get some of the paperwork done. Shifting gears to the area towards West Marion Elementary, kept you up to date that we, we had a change in engineer staff, but the new staff are very much on board now and are working with us. We do have an environmental document they have to complete since there's federal money, so they're starting work on that. I've talked about the booster station that is required because of elevation, they're working on that design. I will probably have a contract amendment next week for some of the additional work that's been required, like the booster station and a few other things. So, I will have that next week for your review. I did talk about this last month and I think prior, we're working on a grant application for this area to complete that loop on Marler and Zion Hill, so we'll have some documents next week for that.
Environmental, will that be completed within the week as well?
The actual environmental process, it will take some weeks to do once they get started. It's not like an environmental impact study. It's essentially identifying any creeks that need to be crossed or bored under, but since most of it's in the right of way, it's a pretty straightforward process. It's just...
Do you have an idea when the breaking ground, starting the digging is going to take place?
It's, I think it, I keep saying three to four months, and I've been saying that for at least three to four months. So, we have the 60% plans now. We met with them, I think a week and a half ago, Mr. Riddle and I had reviewed the plans, and... And they're moving much faster now that they have the engineer transition. But the booster will take a little bit more time to design. But the plans are pretty much there. The only real comment we had on the plans, there's a few minor issues Mr. Riddle will look through. They did not have meter boxes at each property. And I told them that's what we expect to see in every project. And so, they're working to put those back in. But there will be a few places where they have to deviate out of the right of way because of topography. And so, we'll, we'll have, I think, six or seven easement acquisitions that we'll need to work on. So, I asked them to get all that work, you know, the plats and everything else for our attorney, so we can start working on those as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wood.
I think that's all under the, the water.
Let's move on now then to item C, which is the Charlotte Water Inter Basin Transfer Update. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. I've not had this on the agenda for quite a while. And mostly, there's not been a lot to report on and say, but there's been a little bit of movement in the inter basin transfer item. And so, just a, a quick reminder, Charlotte Water, which is the water provider for all of, essentially all of Mecklenburg County, they have indicated their plans to submit an application for an inter basin transfer to move water from the Catawba Basin to the Rocky River Sub Basin, which is part of the Yadkin River Basin. And so, they haven't actually filed the application for that, but they've started conversations with the, the agency in Raleigh that would ultimately approve it. And they had meetings, I guess, last, last year to receive public input. Since the, those public input meetings, they've been having some preliminary conversations with upper Catawba communities to hear concerns and feedback. And so, they've been as cooperative and understanding as you can be in their situation. So, what's changed? The General Assembly did pass what was House Bill 850. This bill placed a moratorium on large inter basin transfers until 2027. And they also initiated a study of IBTs that will be performed by UNC. So, there, there's really no movement. We are having conversations with Western Piedmont Council of Governments. And we're not in that council of governments group, but we're lumped in and included city and the town, as well as the county in those conversations. So, as it comes along, I'll keep you posted. But a little bit of action with that bill, but otherwise, we'll just keep monitoring it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wood. Let's move along now to item D, which is the county property updates.
Thank you. There's an expression about, I think on the internet or something about this, this could have been an email, talking about meetings and things. But this could have been an email to the board and just to say, I had a meeting and this, some numbers that we received about some property matters. But with the dollar amount on these, I wanted to make sure it was brought to your attention in, in this setting. And so, I've got two items here. One under the services building, HVAC heading. The services building, which many people maybe still knows, administration building, the basement of the courthouse, whatever you might call it, is 60 East Court Street. That is where the tag office is amongst other things. That building opened in the mid 70s. You can tell by just looking at it, but also from being inside, at times, the, the climate is interesting to say the least. And so, the, there is a, an air system, forced air, that is designed to run all the time. And it generally does. And then, for cooling and also for, for heat, there's baseboard heat. And it functions very well in the winter sometimes. So well, in fact, that sometimes depending on the occupant, they have asked for the baseboard to be disconnected because it would just, you know, burn them out. So, it's an older system with the heating and the separate cooling. Probably inefficient is a good word for it, and it's old. And so, we've talked for a couple of years now about some state funding we received to go towards renovation of a building. And that building was identified with some ambiguity. And the HVAC system was identified some time ago as being probably the priority to address before cosmetic things. So, we struggled for a while to find a responsive mechanical engineer. But once we did, we started bringing him in and asking to evaluate the system. Say, I do have some, just some breakdowns. I have his letter provided to you. And then, some, some various costs. Again, he's a, he's an engineer, he's not a contractor, but this is based on recent work. So, for example, if he just more or less replaced what was in there as far as the air handling unit, you're looking at about a $222,000 cost. If you added in, replace the chiller that's in there with a modern chiller that we placed outdoors, that would add. That number also includes... The, the 222 number also includes heating, by the way. But the 284 would include essentially just a new chiller. So, that's in addition to that 222. And then, the last number, the 154, that is, he's not, you can replace all the ductwork in the building, of course, but he's not included that in this quote. But this would be for the damper controls. That would allow for essentially about two offices at a time to be controlled by one damper control, but leaving the existing ductwork. So, an expensive proposition if everything is done all at once and regardless of what funding would be identified. So, we do have about 300,000 of state funds available. What I would like to do, I barely mentioned this to Ms. Bell, but I have provided this to her, is to look at it, talk to Mr. Riddle for additional thoughts and recommendations. And then, you know, come back to you with more of a plan on how to do it. But I just, this has got in my hand, I want to get it in front of you. The other item is related to our DSS property. We noticed several months ago that one of the retaining walls in the rear had a little bit of a lean to it. And so, to be safe, we moved cars away from it and marked it off for safety. We brought in a consulting engineer. And his recommendation is, of course, not to leave it like it is. There's two options to do soil nailing, which is essentially, you know, put in nails or screws into the wall and tie it into the earth behind it and essentially pull it up to that, to that soil. That would require permanent easement with the neighbor since we do not own that soil behind it. And there's also question and concern about the integrity of the wall. It's been there, I think, since AMP was built in the 50s or 60s. And so, that's a concern about with that, would stand. The other option is a removal of existing wall and construction of a new one. If you are familiar with the parking lot, the city put in a retaining wall recently, and that's mostly block. This wall is quite a bit taller and would probably would not work with that kind of stacked block. You would need probably a poured wall. And say, if that's done, that cost is about $200,000. So, it does not, again, we blocked it all for safety, but it does not appear that the wall is in any imminent danger of falling. But we are looking at options on how to replace it.
How many spaces did you lose parking?
Just about four, say. But when you're pretty much full, that four means a lot. But, but it's thankfully not more than that.
I think it'd be worthwhile to get a price on digging that out behind the existing wall and looking at maybe, you know, if you dig that out, it could settle back in its place to where it was. But even if it doesn't, it would be easier to do something with. Then maybe fill that back in with gravel and puts a little bit of drainage in it. Might be able to do that a lot cheaper than what you're talking about.
What about talking to the neighbor that owns it to see if there's a, because we would probably be on there.
Right.
The, to have it where we can get it back to where it can be repaired, either full replacement or this, I like this idea better where we can pull it back in.
Sure. We will, I don't know that Mr. Riddle has had that conversation, but we will with the neighbor.
And if he could do that for our next meeting, our next nightly meeting, that'd be good.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
By consensus, we'll do that.
Yep. Yeah. Everybody agrees with that, right? Okay.
That's all I had under those items.
Okay. Let's move to item B and get an animal service update.
Two items here. Requested to give an update on a couple of items here. So, here we are. First item under the heading of animal shelter. We have had discussion for several years about moving on from the current property and the current building due to the current condition of the current building, as well as the lack of space for additions and so forth. And so, we have evaluated several pieces of property. We've looked at one on 226 South that's already owned by the county. That was deemed to be unsuitable due to essentially soil conditions and the proximity to the flood plain. We have since presented an option on Spalding Road on county owned property. We were also asked to look at property on, that is county owned, approaching the shooting range. Whether it's the Spalding Road property or the proper, or the property leading up to the shooting range, which is several thousand yards away from the range itself on that road, grading will be necessary, obviously. An issue that was identified at the shooting range site is there's no public utilities, of course, and so, that creates more of a, a need for, you know, more of a drain filled area for the septic since there's a lot of water usage with cleaning out runs. And so, that, that could cause more issue than having it on public sewer. The Spalding Road site, I spoke to Mr. Abernathy today. He was talking about a possible economic development project. He said, I've got an interest in that property. And this, talking about that with the board tonight about animal shelters. So, it has not been obviously developed by the county. It's been owned by the county since the early 80s. It was purchased from the Nice rooms. And so, it's there, it's available. It would require some amount of grading based on what we've talked about before. And it does have utility access for water and sewer. So, it has aspects working for it. And maybe the only negatives that stand out are the, some amount of grading that has to happen. And if there's a difference of opinion on whether it's the highest and best use of the property. And so, that's in the eye of the beholder. But trying to stay within the, the confines of looking at existing county property that would be suitable. It's a pretty narrow band of options.
Do we own the property leading to the shooting range where the proposed site would be?
We own it after Muddy Creek. So.
Since you cross creek.
Okay.
Before, it's a separate owner. We do own it on the other side. And I didn't mention it out loud in the senior memo, but another concern in thinking about it is the high water events.
I've got another. I've got another thought for another place. You know, when you're going out to the Universal Building, you turn there across the river tracks and that place on the left. The city, I think, owns that. You know, it's like a field there. I think at one time, there was some dumpage in there.
Right.
Or whatever. But that might be a good fitting place for, and it's, you know, it's a decent looking piece of property.
There's water sewer there.
Yes.
We could add.
That would be, that'd be worth asking, checking into. And I'm sure the city's not doing anything with it and no plans to. So, that would be a great spot for it.
We could, could check that out.
I would like to just zero in on the site. And you mentioned several things tonight, this 500,000, 600,000 for the HVAC at the services building, possibly could be less, 200,000 for the retaining wall. We talked about the 911 center relocating it out from under the current location in its own freestanding building. And it doesn't look like the federal government's going to give us money to do that. And we do need to do something with it, with our animal shelter as, as it currently is. Can you expand the current, at the current site? Can you expand at the current site where it's at?
It would be, we have looked at it before and we actually had drawings. It would be a very limited expansion. About, I think we could add about eight runs. But it's.
Any more capacity for more animals?
You could put two dogs in a run. So, I mean, you could add about 15, 16 dogs.
What's your recommendation with, with needs we have? What, what would you recommend to this board as far as? We do know we have had another inspection at the animal shelter the other day and they're encouraging the board to do something. So, what, as a county manager, what's your recommendation as to do?
You didn't ask for a preface, but if I can give one. It, it can be challenging with the county government with all your responsibilities to prioritize some things over other things. And so, but we do it all the time. You do when you adopt a budget or you're, you're picking something over something else. And so, that's the joy of being in the county government or sometimes city, where you have all the fun things that we get to do. It can, well, I'm choosing this over this. But it is a county responsible. But having said all that, it is a county responsibility to do animal control. Not technically a mandated service, but if you didn't do animal control in some level of it, you would end up doing it one way or the other. So, I think our staff do a good job and we do a good job at this, at the shelter as it is. But we need a new building. And, and it, it's hard to talk about that when we need a new DSS building first before anything else. There have been conversations about and discussions about options for DSS, for example. And some of those are very promising to where we could have everyone under one roof and, you know, have a long-term facility for, for that staff and those clients. Otherwise, you're looking at a tremendous cost. And we've talked about that in the last two or three years, many, many millions of dollars. We need a new 911 center. And I, I say that to him about every time I go in there. And he said, yes, I've been talking about that about five or 10 years. Where have you been? But, so you asked about animals. So, an animal services, an animal shelter. What I've seen that's been, I think, a good idea is our friends to the east in Burke County, they, they had two needs that were concurrent. They needed a new animal shelter. They needed a new EMS station, headquarters. It's much smaller than what we did here, but I think ours is much nicer. But anyway, they built a new EMS headquarters and animal shelter at the same time. They financed them at the same time. I believe did to the same company. I'll stand corrected on all that. But if, if the board is amenable to doing any of the number of things we talked about, it costs money to operate a county. But the recommendation, I think, would be to bundle several different capital projects. Whatever it might be, but we, if we know and we're hopeful about a DSS facility through other partnerships, I think that can wait a few years. We might need to do some interim options there in the meantime. But in, in the next couple of years, I think a 911 center and animal shelter probably rise to the next on the list. But in the next couple of years, I think a 911 center and animal shelter probably rise to the next on the list of things that might have to be built.
That we could financially afford to do.
Right, as opposed to some of the other.
Was that, I do know that there was a, it was possibly about 18 months ago, you had a list for us to kind of rank the number one, two, three, four, five. There were five or six items on the list, including DSS, transfer station, stuff like that.
Right.
If you could get that for us.
Sure.
I do think that we, either individuals, commissioners, and staff, we've got to start bugging Warren Daniels and Dudley and start trying to get a little bit more support for getting DSS on budget specifically, but then also making sure we're asking for additional monies that we don't have for that. Now, it's, at least gets us aware of what is needed in the next five to 10 years on that. And it's going to be beneficial because of what we've gone over tonight, 560, or 550 to 650, you know, on certain things, or $200,000 for a wall. It's just, it's on stuff that we don't have, it's just very difficult to plan. And I do think that we do need to hit our state legislation up to help us out.
And I agree with Patrick on, for sure, having conversations with Dudley Green and Warren Daniels and Jake Johnson.
Yeah.
Jake's the go-getter.
Yeah.
And making sure they are where their needs. And at the same time, running a dual track, doing a dual track with some kind of little small bundle right here, because I think we've got, close to, correct me, Ashley, if I'm wrong, but with what's been communicated, maybe about $1.2 million in donations for an animal shelter. So, we've got a good start. And I think that, I would like to see personally, you bring back a recommendation to the board in the next month or if you need longer, two months, max, to bring back a recommendation on. If you want to recommend a small bundling package to handle some of this stuff, I'd be open to definitely consider it.
And in that bundle, also have Allison's input.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
What kind of impacts that going to do to our general fund stuff?
Exactly, and I would also add that we do have rental income that we are now receiving from our lower floor of the DSS, our senior center building. And so, I would like to see that revenue earmarked and flagged for debt service repayment. Because anytime we take on debt.
Well, that was the way we voted, voted for that start.
We've got to show the LGC how we can pay for it to get approved, right? So, I'm fully committed to earmarking that revenue to satisfy a debt service moving forward.
Let me throw a wild idea out. The school system has just announced that they are looking at a new school. Will one of the old buildings revert back to us?
The way the law is with school property, if they intend to dispose the property, they have to offer it to you first. And the way it's written, it talks about a negotiated sale. And so, I would encourage conversations to occur between now and, you know, the ribbon cutting for the new school about those facilities and properties. And I've had some conversations, more on the inquiry side with superintendent about plans and hopes and discussions, because they have needs. And they, he's made me aware of some of the sites and locations they have staff, but.
We've already expressed our interest to.
Our desire to have one of those two buildings.
I would encourage further conversation, you know, and more of the conversation as things progress.
Well, my thought is.
And that's a good idea, man, because.
It may keep us from building a building.
That's the goal, and we'll know, and correct me if I'm wrong, again, Ashley, we'll know, or the school system will know by October. They moved the, they were on there in December, but the state's pushed that forward.
The deadline is October, I don't know when the, it may be in the month of October as far as the grant. Superintendent Grit will be here next Monday to seek approval for interlocal agreement related to the pursuit of needs-based capital for that new school.
And while you're checking on this other stuff, also check with the city on that piece of property.
Yes, sir, I've got that on my list.
All right, anything else?
And just to recap, you did get in 60 days, in two months out, we're gonna, you're gonna have all that?
Yes, sir, I've got that here.
Okay.
And if I could wrap up on animal services, there was an ongoing request to be on the lookout for funds, external funds for spay neuter. It's very small, but we would like to apply for a rotary grant for $1,500. That would go towards low-income spay neuter.
Mr. Chairman, we authorize the county manager to seek that grant. Second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Wait, before we move on, the existing animal shelter, can we explore renovating that building also? I mean, if we can add 15 more dogs, how big are you looking, how many dogs are you looking to house at a new facility?
A lot of it, Ms. Carr, can be, so, yes, answer your question, we can revisit some of the discussion that we had previously, but also maybe why some of the discussion moved away from that. But some of it had to do with not, and I talked about the dog runs, but not so much having more dog runs, but also facilities and capability to have separation. Like if there's a quarantine dog that had like a bite hole or something where they could be set off aside and not around dogs we're trying to adopt out, the same with cats, you know, that might be a similar issue. And so, we're not looking to, you know, create like a animal clinic, but have a little bit more separation-type space. But I, in the, if it's okay, definitely with you and I, but if the board is agreeable, I can pull back some of the plans we looked at before and just kind of bring this back.
I'm just wondering, that's all, I mean, if we could get it done faster, if it was something we could renovate, but.
But I'll, I'll get, I can bring those back.
I thought we had exhausted the ideas on that because of the space we just didn't have.
And some is coming back too. I think when we looked at, we had some cost estimates, and it's still a lower cost of building a facility, but the cost from the architect seemed to be pretty high for what we were getting out of a renovation and addition, but.
And there's been inquiries too by a donor on the possibility of leasing that from the county for animal purposes, correct?
Right, for like a low-cost spay neuter cleaning, but nothing in writing yet, but, so there's possibilities. But regardless, I can get some of that prior information shared with you.
Okay, was that all you had?
Yes, sir.
Did we, did we need to do any kind of action on any of the?
I think we had a motion second on the, to get back in 60 days with the recommendation, though we didn't vote on it.
That was, I thought that was already, okay, all in favor of that, say aye. All right. Moving now to new business. Mr. Woodin, we've got the fiscal year 2026 budget update, are you ready?
Yes, sir, we did have an addition that came in addition to your memo. We have a, we talked about the AIA, actually, it was interesting, I know we didn't talk about it, but there's a project budget ordinance for asset inventory and assessment that we would ask that be adopted as well as budget amendments GF 5 through 8 and School Project 2. And that's all the action items for.
Move that we approve the budget update and also the budget amendments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Yep, I'd like to ask, this being September after the budget started in July, I want to ask you to make sure that the managers are looking at things in detail because of the, we just need to make sure of it. I am support of the motion, but we just need to make sure, it seems like it's fairly quick after the year started, to start asking for amendments.
Okay, any other? Do you have a comment, Mr. Woodin?
Some of this, sometimes it can be items that are carried over from prior years that we are now ready to spend. Like if we do a financing for vehicles or something, sometimes those are reserved in the prior year and they're appropriated in this year, and that can be amended. But that's typically what you're seeing this early in the year. And some, sometimes things just happen, but point well taken.
Uniforms, insurance, that those are, they're showing increases, and I'm just, the vehicle purchases we knew about, we should be able to have that in the budget. You know, it's, again, I'm not against it. I just want to make sure that every manager and director is looking at their budgets closely.
Great point.
Good point.
And I'm ready to vote.
All right, we've got a motion and a second now. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, okay. Okay, Mr. Woodin, administrative items.
Scroll back up to, sorry. There's three items under that heading. One is the EMS, non-collectible write-offs. You have a NIBO water adjustment. And then, the last one is an ad that hopefully may or may not made all the packets, but the sheriff is applying for a grant that requires that we have a data breach policy. And so, this was something that's due, I think, maybe tomorrow. And so, we did find a template that we have reviewed, and we've made it applicable to our county, but we would ask that you approve that.
Mr. Chairman, must you approve the administrative items and the data breach policy?
Second. Motion, second, discussion.
Yep, I got something else on this, just as an example, like the EMS write-offs or other write-offs.
Sure.
Is it by statute that we have to write these off after 10 years? And is there any issues of putting liens on property for stuff like this? Because sometimes it can get hefty.
You are not allowed to attach liens for EMS bills. You can otherwise treat it as a lien, like a tax lien. We do, you know, so we track everyone if there's an estate, you know, for the folks that are deceased. There's no estate, I wanted to collect a guess. Otherwise, we do garnish wages. We do that set-off program which intercepts lottery proceeds and intercepts tax refunds on the state level. We have a billing company, that EMS MC that does the primary collection. If it's un, and these are older before them, anyway. They try, and then we have a collection company that tries, and then we have staff downstairs that try. And so, a lot of folks, they just.
Before we see this, you have exhausted all those avenues of collecting.
Many, many times of effort.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, okay. Let's move on down to item C, which is the commissioners committee appointments. Adam Clark, you have.
Thank you. This is a first reading for the application received for Foothills Workforce Development. Mr. Mark Weber has applied to be reappointed to the board now that his term limit is expiring. He has served on workforce development for many years and wants to continue to serve.
Let's please the board.
Move we approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, okay.
The second is a reading for the two seats on McDowell Economic Development. Mr. Harold Walker and Jeffrey Judd have expressed interest in remaining on the board, but no applications have been received. And finally, the Board of Commissioners needs to appoint a member to the Child Fatality Prevention Team. This team meets infrequently and has a meeting scheduled for Tuesday.
Make a motion, we approve Mr. Walker and Mr. Judd to the economic development board. And Commissioner Garner's expressed an interest to be on the Child Fatality Prevention Team. So, I make a motion that she serve on that board's commission.
Second that.
Okay, we've got a motion, second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, okay, thank you. That's all you have, isn't it, Adam Clark? Next is item D, which is the property tax matters.
Yes, sir, in addition to the typical refunds, rebills, discoveries, you do have, talked about write-offs before, these are 10-year write-offs presented to you by the tax collector. And so, we're not able to forcibly collect those after 10 years.
Move we approve the tax.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, okay. Next, we have citizen comments, did we have anyone signed up?
We got two signed up.
Okay. All right, now, commissioner staff, anything from commissioner staff?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do I hear a motion that we go into closed session and present to NCGS 143-31811A6?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We are now in closed session.
I make a motion to come out of closed session.
Second.
Motion, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are now out of.
I make a motion to return.
Second. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.